Sorry, I was assisting an individual on the board in my capacity as the informal IT manager. Trustee Borninski.
Here, I don't know if you can hear me.
Foster.
Good evening.
Ganguly.
I'm here.
Graham Hudek.
Good evening.
Let the official record reflect that Clerk Seegrist is in attendance. Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
And trustee Snyderman.
I'm here.
Thank you, can we please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Clerk Seegrist, supported by Treasurer Slavens and Stephen Snyderman, both of them at the same time. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Agenda is adopted. Okay, great. Tonight, we have a study session. The first item on the agenda is the proposed fire station number four update on 2021 statistical data. So Jamie, did you guys have something you wanted to share or just, okay.
Yep.
Let me allow you to do that.
Chad's going to put this up here.
Panelists.
I get started while you're figuring this out here, but if you want, I, first of all, appreciate you seeing us again tonight and Chad for allowing us to jump in in front of him for this 20 minutes or so. But I understood that there was some questions regarding our stats on station four. So Deputy Chief has updated all the numbers from the 2021 data. And we just wanted to present that to you real quick tonight before Chad, Director Baugh got going on his presentation. So we redid the analysis that we had for the station and I put that in front of you. And it's basically the same one that you guys saw back in April. And we just put that new data in it. So it's nothing new, but this way you have something for reference. And I've also emailed that to you along with our accreditation pack that I don't know if everyone's seen with the recommendations for the fire service through accreditation. But with that being said, we started our assessment of the fire station years ago prior to even establishing the strategic plan that we had in place. And we worked on that strategic plan for quite some time, got that in place, brought that before the board was approved with the board. And we started building our foundation off of that strategic plan. We evaluated a whole lot of numbers, a whole lot of data for station four and came up with the conclusion that you saw in that analysis there back in April. So with that being said, we'll get into the data here and go forward with the recommendations here. This is obviously Deputy Chief Jamie Strazier, you guys all know him. So he's really the workhorse behind all the data that we collect and spends a lot of time pulling that all together. So I really appreciate him getting this together for you guys. Our run volume this year, or I should say in '21 exceeded all of our previous years. And we ended up, as you can see, as just over 9,700, almost 9,800 runs total. We know that that 2020 was out of range just because of the COVID, as we discussed before. And we don't see any difference in coming years. We're going to continue to see this rise in our call volume as we move forward and continue to build in the township and add population. So this right here, this kind of breaks down exactly, maybe this will answer some of the questions that you have about why we chose that area as a station four moving forward. So obviously, we know that, you know, we're close to 10,000 runs. And those red bars there represent the areas. As you know, we break down our community into 36 square miles and each one of those are represented there. So those red bars would kind of be the targeted area for station four. And you can see that that represents about 26% of our call volume at this point. So we're talking roughly 2,500 calls, 2,600 calls a year to just that area, which is why we know that we're going to need that station in that area or why we're recommending that station to that area. And I'll turn this over to Jamie here for a second to talk about mutual aid.
Good evening, everyone. So I think the last time that we met when we were talking about these numbers, you know, things change with numbers as we all know, right? And this slide right here definitely represents that. This is showing us obviously the total number of runs we had last year. And it also coincides with how much mutual aid we had. Remember that mutual aid to us is our measurement of resiliency, right? We use, do we, when our ambulances are overrun with call volume and we need to call in existing other agencies to help us, we look at that as like not a good thing, right? We want to take care of our own people here in Canton, right? And we look at these types of statistics to measure that resiliency. And when I think I met with you earlier this year, or last year, I'm sorry, we were on point to not hardly have any mutual aid. And we thought, man, we really are doing good, right? All these ambulances that we have in service and this increase in manpower, we're being very successful. And then the later part of the year hit and our run volume just shot through the roof. And when we had that, we eclipsed even two years ago in 2019, but our mutual aid was still steady. So we're still going to use that as a good sign that we're moving in the right direction in that resiliency mark. I have a couple of slides moving forward that really demonstrate that. And we talked about that overlapping run volume, like when you get one call, then you get another call in that same area. Those are things that we and the fire service are on the lookout for because, well, as I said, that resiliency factor is definitely in place. This next slide talks primarily about, this is right out of our standard to cover. And I bring this up to you guys just once again so that we can see where the population is. This is a GIS map. And that red section, that section 24 to us, that slide, that particular section has the most, is the most populated zone that we have in the township. Based on the census data that we currently have, we're really still waiting to plug that current census data, which we know has increased, into this data. But as of when we had this done in 2018, '19, this was our highest populated zone. Remember as well that we take a look at each zone and we measure them for socioeconomic components of each zone as well. So that means that we have the, we have the population, we have the median house price, the, all those median numbers that you get from the census are located in these numbers. And how that helps us is really just to determine, you know, that although section 36 down there is considered a rural area to us in the accreditation world due to population, there's still a lot of people down there in that section that are, you know, at the far reaches of the township to get service from us in a timely fashion. Go to the next slide. So this one right here is our average response time, right? And this has just been updated for 2021. We can look at these and see that, you know, each one at the bottom is situated by a section or zone. And I can point to 36 and show you that on average, it takes us 11 minutes and 41 seconds to get down to that response zone. You can also see though that in the white bar for section 31, it says that it takes us 11 minutes and 35 seconds on average to get there. And section 31 is on the west side, southwest side of the township, right? But it's still in that bottom corridor of numbers, right, 31 through 36. We don't have it incorporated into this slide to make that bar be red because at first when we were looking at this, we don't really know what the response area is going to be. We can definitely guarantee that the red bars are going to be in the station four area. But it's quite possible that 31 is also going to be in that station four area, which will also drive that response time down as well, okay? So it's really, this is just a quick snap out of where we expect it to be. But areas like 31, chances are it's going to be in station four's area, also reducing that response time zone as well. All right, next one we can go to, and this is my favorite slide. I don't know why it's my favorite slide, probably just because it says so much. And hopefully I'll be able to articulate that with you. This simultaneous call volume has been hard to handle for us and hard to get our handle on. But as this slide demonstrates, right, 54% of the time through 2016 and '21, 54% of that time, we've had one single event without another event occurring before that first event is done, right? And then as this keeps going, right, and on and on and on, if we have two events that happen simultaneously, that's 23% of the time, that's two ambulances or two fire trucks, kind of depends on the nature of the call and so on and so forth. So this slide to us is very important because it backs up what we're saying and kind of makes us credible to the point where when it starts to get to that yellow mark, that five and six range, although those numbers are very small, 2.6% isn't very much. But I can tell you that what that means though is that's a mutual aid call that's going to come into the township where we have to wait for another agency to come in and potentially render care. Yes, our engines would be on scene first and they are advanced life support to initiate that care. But transport to any facilities is going to be delayed definitely. Not to mention the fact that we're very prideful in how we're doing this and how we're trying to set this response up. And we don't want those calls to be in the pie. We want that number to be, we want that number to be less and less. I can't guarantee when the calls are going to come in. Sometimes they come in five and six at a time. We can't guess that when that's going to happen. But what we can do is we can, we can be sure that we have the personnel in place and the response areas in place to handle these calls effectively and professionally.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah, please.
My clarifying question would be, this is township wide as opposed to zone wide?
That's correct.
Okay.
Township wide, total township wide. We, I'd still be working if we did it by zone, but I will be doing it by zone sometime later this year.
I'm not trying to give you any more work. I was just kind of wanted to visualize what that would mean in my head.
Yeah, that's a tremendous amount of data to pull because we're pulling from separate programs to make sure that we get accurate numbers from our Clemis, from our CAD, from our ESO, the reports that are put in. So there's a tremendous amount of data that we have to pull together and really formulate correctly so that we're giving you the proper information. And that was a big part of our accreditation was making sure that our data was on point. And they really questioned that data. So we got a lot of things straightened out, especially with the response times. Going back to that one slide where it was talking about, you know, these increased numbers for these sections, we know that, you know, when we look at those numbers, for example, like an eight and a half minute response time as being our average response time, when we look at all those 11 minutes and 10 minute response times, we know if we can pull those down to eight minutes, our entire response time is going to drop. With that being said, you know, we're also, or I should say, Deputy Chief is also continuing to work on how we can separate those data points from non-emergency calls and emergency calls because that's kind of a blurred subject at this point. And it makes a big difference when we're heading out and we're not trying to respond quickly. You know, we're trying to respond safely at all calls, but a lot of times we're going out without lights and sirens. And those kind of calls, we can separate out when they're clicked into the system correctly. But if they're not put into the system correctly, they get grouped into this entire response time. So we're really passionate about the numbers and making sure that we're delivering the right data to you. But on this slide here, you know, this was back in the other ones as well. It really shows our, you know, that orange area there, red area, whatever you want to call it, is our high response time. So with, you know, the proposed station at Lilly and Michigan Avenue, that really takes all of that red right out of the picture for us in the township. I did want to also mention that, you know, I was speaking to Jade and he asked Director Smith, he had asked if we had put in anything about the future development that's happening down in that area as well. And I said, you know, I really didn't have any data to put in there. So I think it's also important to do some follow-up, that we can get back to you about all the proposed development that's going into that corridor down on the south side there. I'm sure as you all know, through sitting through all the meetings. Then this is kind of our final slide here, just to kind of give that overall analysis. And as you can see, we're still the only, you know, organization with three stations. So this would bump us up to what I feel would be a satisfactory response area for the township and put our numbers more in line with the amount of call volume that we have as well as the census, our latest census of 98,000. And you can see where that kind of places us compared to the other communities. Now that data there, we updated ours to the 98,000, which is the latest census. And those are still the 2010 census on the other communities because we have not had time to pull that together for them yet. But we know that certain communities like Livonia, you know, dropped in population. We know that there's going to be some changes in Southfield and Westland and so forth. So take it for what it's worth and that's why I always say, you know, it's data, right? And so we've got to look at it, but more or less focus on the Canton there where we're at with the number of stations and our swarm per population. And that's, that's a pretty accurate number for us, so. And with that being said, I don't want to take up too much of your time tonight. I really appreciate you allowing us to get in here, sneak in before this important study session for Director Baugh. So you guys have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer those. I did email, like I said, our accreditation report as well as our analysis that you have there on paper as well. And I'm happy to get you any more information.
Any questions?
Madam Supervisor, is there a projected timeline for when the board will start looking at doing decision-making on any of this?
Right now, we're trying to get funding. That is one of the items that we went to Lansing for, to get funding for something like this. So we are, we've got our fingers in all the pots right now, trying to get funding for that. And then once we, I think we've subcurbed enough, we can start moving together with some of the decisions.
And I will add one more thing. I know that originally in the analysis, we had asked for 19, obviously, you know, that would be in the perfect world, right? And we understand that there's other needs in the township as well, right? And we understand that the, why it's a very big priority for us in the fireside to build a station and add the personnel. I also know that there's room for us to remodel our staffing level, right? And so, you know, whether we move forward with 19 personnel or we move forward with 12 or 13 personnel, I'm very confident that Deputy Chief and I can rearrange our staffing levels to accommodate that and make those positions work where we need them to as well.
Other question, I noticed in your report that Shelby had like five stations with only 68 personnel or something like that. Is there some other model that they're using or do you know? Or it'd be interesting to know how they're, maybe they're not utilizing them all, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think that when you get into a lot of those surveys that we send out, a lot of the information we get back, we try to ask a clear, concise question on some of that stuff. And when we ask about the, you know, staffing levels for administration and the staffing levels for suppression or inspection, it always comes back convoluted a little bit. So that's kind of why we keep that out of there and we just say the full sworn, like Jamie and myself, where we're basically the administration, we're adding this training chief, obviously, who's going to be a tremendous help to us. But like if you move over to Dearborn, for example, they have five, you know, assistant chiefs and they have, you know, three training officers, or I should say two training officers, right? And there's just a list and a host of administrative personnel. And it's very similar to the police department where we really try to keep the boots on the ground in that direction. So hopefully that helps answer your question there. Not exactly, but I would say that Shelby is probably the most comparable community to us as far as, you know, prior to this census for our population staffing and like that. We used to use them a lot, especially in like contract negotiations and stuff.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I had a question. About, similar to the comparables, looking at, Livonia had 86 sworn officers, but I noticed that they're, and they had five fire stations, but their budget was like $3 million less than ours. That must be, they must not be EMT certified or what, how is that?
That's actually because they don't count their capital into their budget.
Say that again?
They don't count their capital purchases into their operating budget.
So that's an accounting, accounting reporting issue.
Yes.
Interesting.
So it's very difficult to get these comparisons because everybody does it just a little bit different. So when you go back to ask them that, they're like, this is our entire operating budget. Does that include, well, no, our fire trucks come out of this, right? Whereas our fire trucks come out of our budget. So that's, it's very hard.
When do you think you would have a model of what those future run districts or, what are we calling it? What's the term of art we're using for it?
Our zones.
Zones, okay, sorry. When do you, do you imagine you would have a model of what a four-zone system might look like? And when you build that, would you project the growth that is occurring in the western portion? Yeah, I'm just curious.
So I'll let Jamie answer this question, but we did go outside when we ran this GIS numbers and he can probably answer that GIS question a little bit better than I can.
Yeah, we actually contracted out with the GIS firm to create those maps to identify travel times from where a station is located and then how long it would take someone via roads to get to those areas surrounding that fire station. So we feel like that work has been done. To expound on that more, for the station four location, currently we have it set at Michigan and Lilly.
Yeah.
We did as well, I mean, we looked at it at Michigan, we looked at it at Hagerty and Palmer as well. And we still had some area though that we, on the western side of the township, that we weren't able to get to. So we scratched that and kept it at the Michigan and Lilly area. We're pretty darn, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, going back to your question, I honestly think that state section 31 that we're talking about in the southwest corner, and I think that's what you're alluding to, I think that that really depends on a kind of a time of day. And when we look at the GIS to say, hey, at 5:00 in the afternoon, it's going to be faster for station one to get there compared to, you know, station four, right? So I think those numbers, if those are something that you're interested in seeing right now, prior to, we can certainly do that. But that's kind of things that we look at constantly as we go on to road construction. When they redo Warren Road this summer and they're going to shut it down, he goes back into the computer, looks at the GIS and says, okay, we're going to rezone this. So station one's going to handle Sheldon Warren, for example, because westbound's closed down and it's going to take longer for station two to get there. So it's something that we look at all the time.
So the zones are relatively fluid.
Oh, all the time?
Yeah.
Interesting. Okay, that's important to think about. Well, and I imagine when you're creating the zones, you have to factor in EMS runs versus fire runs too because I imagine there's different staffing needs for that. They probably occur at different rates, especially in the different types of, you know, residential areas versus commercial areas. You probably don't, you know, it's just, I'm just, I'm just excited and kind of think that's really interesting. It reminds me a little bit of the precinct stuff that we're doing, right? Trying to understand how to deliver services appropriately to people based on how they live. And so, no, I think it's really interesting. I think you've made the case, and you made the case in the past for the need for it, especially as we look at Michigan Avenue, is trying, you know, trying to increase commercial activity on Michigan Avenue to bring about R and D, you know, facilities and work on being a part of a regional, a regional partnership on stuff. I really do think, I don't know how you do that without making sure that the core services are there. And it is abundantly clear that individuals who live in that section of town aren't getting the same level of service as other individuals. And there's definitely some equity to that, you know, which I know is a priority for us to talk about and to focus on. So, yeah.
Thanks, and you also showed us the number of calls that are in that area. I think that was one thing we were waiting for from the last one.
Yeah. Well, thank you for your time, have a good evening.
Thank you, thank you. So the next item on the agenda is the Police Transparency and Guidance Subcommittee PTAG update. So leading the efforts here, we have Chief Chad Bao, Eva Davis and Brett Namchep. If you guys want to introduce the rest of your team, I have promoted Laura Cogali.
Okay.
And who else do we have here? Rohit, I'm trying to promote him, for some reason I'm having difficulty doing that. But I also have promoted Scott Wu.
All right.
So I see those three on.
Well, thank you Supervisor, in the spirit of service, looking back over the last, I don't know, it's been probably 18 months, we're looking at how do we deliver service to this community? And whose voices are being heard besides the same voices that I've heard for 26 years, which is mine and a few others that are still left here? Looking outside that box, and I leaned on a few people that are in this room, we call them the originators. But during this study session, I'd like for everyone to feel comfortable to ask questions. I want it to be a free flow, especially in the spirit of seeking a voice from the community and how we perform services. We know that voice comes through you folks, elected officials. Also in the room, we have members of our CCIC, which are the Subcommittee of the CCIC, which is our Police Transparency Board, and they're here with us today. And I'll introduce them in a second. Also, we have the technical advisors that are here, but the originators. So like all things in life, the one thing I am pretty good at is seeking out consultation from very, very smart people. And I leaned on Anne Marie and Summer Foster, one of our trustees right here with us today, and Lauren Cogali, who now is the Executive Director of the ACLU in Michigan. And finding a best path forward and leading a police department who has been at the top of the game for many years, but taking the next steps. So in doing so, how do you bring that voice from the community to the police department? With the most serious events that we see, you know, the challenging events, the citizen complaints, the use of force issues. So the goal was created through this communication and, you know, I'll break it down, I won't read every word here, but is to bring clarity to challenging police citizen events and to understand not only how the police operate, but to also understand the expectations of the citizens that we serve. So as incumbent upon us, you know, I use this term quite often, we're cheating here in this first line here, but when we say the police are the public and the public are the police, this comes from 200 years ago in England. Sir Robert Pill came up with that mindset. And you look back 200 years, not much has changed. And trying to bring that element back into policing, which is present here with this group. So these examinations have been put in front of the committee. It's been not as robust as we want, just because there's a lot of information. It has to, chance, has to get redacted and it gets slowed up that way. But the Subcommittee was formed and we'll talk about how that happens here. So the members of this Subcommittee, they're, the members, they either live or work full-time in Canton or members of the Canton Coalition for, and are members of the Canton Coalition for Inclusive Communities, like I spoke about. It's a coalition brought together by the Canton Police Department many years ago. Most of us knew at first as a hate crimes coalition. We changed the name a few years ago with the leadership of Eva, thank you. We want to represent our population in Canton. So what Eva did as the Chair of this Subcommittee of the CCIC, she, I'll let her explain the process, but she chose four other members from that CCIC to be on this oversight board. And if you would, Eva, if you could speak how that came to be and give us this board some understanding how we got here today.
So in the spring of 2021, Chief Baugh reached out to me and asked if I would be open in my role as co-chair, I'm the civilian co-chair of the Canton Coalition for Inclusive Communities, to chair the Subcommittee that he felt would make the most sense under the umbrella of the CCIC, which I did agree to. And we did sign a partnership agreement that has some bylaws and lays out what the responsibilities of the Subcommittee are and what the makeup of the Subcommittee is and what our responsibilities and obligations are. So the CCIC members, I co-chair CCIC with Deputy Chief of Police Craig Wilsher. He and I conferred, we asked the Coalition to indicate their willingness to serve and verify that they met the criteria of living or working full-time in Canton and then having a good representation of the demographics of our community. So the members are Kanye Gardner, who is sitting here as well and is happy to answer any questions that you have, Dr. Denise Lilly, Rachel Miller, who is not with us today, and Rohit Singal, who is online? You said he was on?
Yes.
Oh, is Rachel on? Oh, good, Rachel Miller is also on.
Oh, I'm sorry, I will put her up also. Just to let you know also, Amina Ahmed and Digikirian Singh, who's also known as Sunny, they are also on.
Okay, Amina and Sunny are also in the CCIC. And we all agreed, yes, we're going to do this. And then sort of. And then sort of simultaneously, a grant opportunity arose, which the chief did apply for, and that, that actually, it was lovely to have, that actually delayed our first meeting as the foundation, the Hudson-Weber Foundation was coming on board and the grant administrators were coming on board. So we had our first meeting in August, and it was an organizational meeting. We were introduced to our technical training advisors, which were selected by Chief Baugh and 21 CP Solutions under the Hudson-Weber Foundation grant, and that is Brett Namchaff, who is sitting to my left, and then also Dr. Scott Wolf from Michigan State University, who is on the meeting as well.
Thank you Eva, that was great. She jumped right in, she might have been a little blindsided by the phone call, but we're fortunate enough to, she jumped right in and she leads a great meeting. So the foundation, it was just by happenstance that this was occurring at the same time, and, you know, the goal, as they put forth, was to have, as I quoted here, local public safety departments to work with their communities to address issues of police practices, systems, and services, and that's exactly where we're headed with this. For Canton, we recognize this could offset some costs of the committee of, you know, the technical advisors, Scott Wolf's a professor from Michigan State University, he's very well-known, and we know Brett Namchaff, who, just by another luck in my career, he happens to be one of the experts in the United States on the use of force, and he's a police legal advisor in the state of Michigan. So with our goal of bringing clarity to these challenging events, these technical advisors help educate our committee. Our committee can look at our, these challenging events and have a good solid foundation in what's happened with what we noticed at the onset, that they've really taken off on their own. They've, they've had this foundation built by the technical advisors and they're, they're there to provide some context, and that's how it came to be. But there you see the credentials for Dr. Scott Wolf and Brett. So the grant administration, so the funding was provided by the Hudson-Weber Foundation through 21 CP, Jessica Drake, she's a project manager, she manages the money, there's no fiduciary with the police department or with the township, they manage everything through Jessica Drake, and there's a, another doctor involved from the University of Detroit, she helps Jessica manage the grant to Canton Township. I should provide a little bit more context, originally there's five agencies with Canton and Detroit being the largest agencies that I recall ever received a grant funding to begin with. On the police side, so it's myself, attends the meetings, my secretary is a scribe for the meetings, and our FOIA clerk, who essentially is inundated by the work I give her, just to prepare for this, these meetings once a month, which occur on Thursday, which we have this week. I'll turn it over to Eva a little bit, but part of the process and the bylaws is every year, Eva, the Chair of the Subcommittee, will provide guidance back to the police chief in response to Eva's or the chair's recommendations, I respond within 30 days of her letter to me or information to me to the supervisor to say how I'm gonna implement or consider implementing this guidance from the Subcommittee. So if you would, turn it over some of your recommendations to the police department based on what you've seen this year.
I first want to officially apologize to Tanya Wagner for not including her in my report. I just realized I didn't include her. I've not actually met her, but all of her work allows us to work, so tell her I'm sorry about that. So we had, as I said, we started in August with a training session where we got a really firm grounding in best practices, the policies of the township and the police department. We got to meet each other in some cases over Zoom, and we had some readings and some preparation that we had to complete so that we could start practicing. So it was essentially like playing cards and having an open hand. We started with a model case example from previous years, and then sort of did a practice round of questions and feedback. We worked together, actually with the leadership of Rachel Miller on our Subcommittee, to develop some guiding questions, to make sure that we were all on the same page as we were viewing the redacted body cam footage, the redacted patrol car footage, the case reports, the investigative logs after the complaint was filed, and then the follow-ups. So primarily what we were looking for were areas where we could make recommendations to changes in policy, procedure, practice, coaching, mentoring, after reviewing the totality of the complaint process from beginning to end. Our recommendations culminated in what you see here. We had a lot of conversations about tone and manner and how that interpersonal interaction can affect police officers and, and citizen interaction and how that impacts perceptions. We talked about establishing a progressive approach to the citizen complaint process. Chief Baugh gave us background information about the tracking of the complaints, so that you can see themes in the type of complaint as well as the officers who are involved, and then having conversations with the Subcommittee to amend the acknowledgement letter. When a citizen makes a complaint, they get an acknowledgement letter. We recommended some changes to make that clearer and, and using more layperson language. All members of the Subcommittee are just average laypeople, we don't necessarily know all of the police jargon, and so your average citizen probably would not either. And then in the response letter, focusing and centering the citizen complainant to make sure that they feel heard and that we demonstrate to them, the chief demonstrates to them, that their concerns are taken seriously and to thank them for giving the police department the opportunity to be transparent and communicative with our citizens. So those were our main recommendations.
Thank you Eva. Yeah, just to provide like, what they actually see as Subcommittee members is a redacted video, they can't see the officer's face or the defendant's face, the police reports are, the names are all redacted, and the internal investigation's redacted. The goal is to actually provide that voice into our training, how we look at our interactions with our citizens, and that's where we start taking over, to make this of substance for our township, not just a facade. So we've already started with the new letters, created a new acknowledgement and educational based response, so our citizens can actually understand a little bit more about the organization, how we, how we're focused on their issue, and know they actually receive the response. I had a little technical issue, sorry. They can actually see the investigation out of my office. We had a 30-year program with the, in the police department, it was at the time very progressive, but it was time to take the next steps. With the tone and manner, that is something that, I'm sorry.
We lost your slides.
Yeah.
Your slides. I think the share screen may have stopped on accident.
Looks like I lost my connection.
Oh.
So.
You emailed that presentation out, right?
No, I didn't.
Oh.
At the slideshow.
Okay, darn it all, I was saying she could put it up.
Yeah. Well.
I can.
That's fine.
See if I can get back on, but it'll take too much. I'll push through. The, yeah, go ahead. Maybe give an opportunity for the Subcommittee to speak.
I did want to see if Kanye or Denise wanted to say anything first. There's a little button to turn on your microphone, and then we can turn to Rachel and Rohit, and then we can go to Brett and Scott.
Yep.
Hello. All right, good evening. First of all, thank you for allowing us to come tonight. I've been a member of this community for about 10 years, and so in 2020, when we had the unrest in the world, COVID, policing, things of that nature, I reached out to Chief and just said, hey, how can I help? I lived in the city of Detroit for many years, I've lived in a lot of different places in the United States, traveled a lot of places in the United States, and I looked at it as, I've always had a great interaction with police, and I said, well, how can I help? Especially with the community I live in, I work with a lot of young people in the community, not only here in Canton, but really in the metro Detroit area, and so I was honored to, last year, to be a part of the CCIC and then part of this group as well, and I feel that having police transparency is important, especially with the way social media is, you only get one side of the story. It's very important that you allow community members to really review these cases and really make recommendation on how things should be handled. And so we've been trained by Brett and we've been, you know, and everyone has been, we went through a lot of training, I think that it was important that we went through the training as a group, we reviewed everything as a group, and then really make, make recommendations because of, it's important that the people that are in the community really reach out and connect with police. And so that's really, I'm really honored to be a part of this group because I'm a member of this community, so. You want to say something now? You could have went first, all right?
He's harassing me.
Get a warning.
Good evening, everyone, I am Denise Lilly, thank you all for the opportunity. Echoing what Mr. Gardner said, this has been a journey so far that I have really appreciated. The learning has been very worthwhile. Many of you I do know, I have been a school administrator in Plymouth Canton Community Schools for 13 years now, and in my current position, I actually serve as the Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, and so when the opportunity there, we actually had a conversation about the juvenile diversion program, and so that's how I was first introduced to the CCIC Committee with regard to how the students in our district were being impacted by some, some of the varying things within the community. And so wanting to, again, just strengthen the partnerships throughout the community as a building principal, I can't begin to tell you how important it is to have that strong positive relationship, that was something that I always wanted to focus on, as Mr. Gardner said, there's so much going on in society, and so being able to be transparent, very visible, and also very intentional around the work that we do has been something that I would love to continue. I've been very, very proud to be a resident of this community and to see the work that you all are doing, and it has been very impactful for me personally and professionally, so thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you.
And then Rachel, I know that you did have some comments, I don't know if you want to unmute yourself, introduce yourself and make your comments.
Good evening, everyone. So I would just like to say that it has definitely been a wonderful experience being a part of this committee. Working so closely with Chief Baugh and getting a firsthand look as to how Canton PD operates internally and how the department takes feedback into immediate consideration, has definitely proven to me that without a doubt, change and accountability is possible within police departments. I know that if a victim or a survivor, as I work with domestic and sexual violence survivors in the Canton community, I know that if any of the survivors were to raise a complaint, that that complaint will be taken very seriously and that proper communication and support will be given along the way. Canton is incredibly lucky to have police administration that embraces change and is humbled by the fact that there is always room for improvement in every area, and I am hopeful that with Canton PD leading by example, other committees will form throughout Wayne County and onward. Yeah, I, I just want to end with, I think that this has been really eye-opening to me, and it really does show that progress and change can happen as long as police departments are willing to embrace it.
And who does Rachel work for, again, Rachel?
First Step.
Okay, so.
First Step.
We've worked with Rachel for a long time now, so this is great, and she's been wonderful in helping us progress too, especially with lethality assessments, and it's been in place for a few more years, and they're available all night long with our police, so thank you, Rachel.
Thank you, Rachel. Rohit, did you want to introduce yourself?
Did you promote Rohit?
Rohit is, yeah, he is promoted and panelists, Rohit, you are unmuted, so you can speak.
No, I'm gonna assume that Rohit has nothing to say. We love you, Rohit.
He has probably technology.
So to my left is Brett Namchaff, our technical training advisor.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brett Namchaff, I am a technical advisor for the group, but I'm also a police attorney, and I come with 22 years of lawyer experience on top of 27 years of police experience, so there's some overlap there, I was both a police officer and an attorney, and I'm, I'm impressed with this group, and here's why. When we first started out, Dr. Wolf and I, knowing that we were gonna talk about use of force and police practice, we thought we, and so did CP 21, we thought we'd had to do a lot of upfront training, police use of force, police policy, police rules and regulations, and how those things are, evolve and are created. But then we found out that that would be way too much to throw on citizens, and somehow this thing has evolved into, we train based on the questions that they ask, and that seems to be the way that works well with this group. If it's use of force, we'll give a little blurb about what the law is on use of force and maybe what the national standards are, but then the training comes from the questions that are asked, and one of the things that is impressing me is that there are good questions being asked, and so the questions that are being asked have created a response from the police department. For example, police officers in general were maybe nervous about this when it, when it first occurred, having somebody look at the way they operate. But the cool thing about this group is, the first recommendations they had were for the police administration, and the police administration embraced it, so in essence, the chief's office is leading the way, and this letter to the citizens is very, very important. We're talking about a complaint letter, someone has an issue with the way that they were treated by the Canton Police Department, an officer. They let the law enforcement agency know, Canton Police know, and then what had happened before is they get a little form letter, hey, we got your complaint, we'll let you know. And then at the end it's, hey, we got your complaint, and it really didn't have much substance to it, but it had all this law enforcement words. But what it is now is, we're bringing you in, we want to educate you, and in doing so, you're going to embrace the professionalism and professional poise of the Canton Police Department, because instead of just a form letter, it is now an intro letter that is saying, hey, here's what the process is, and then it's a three-page follow-up letter that has two pages of education on the process and telling them about Canton Police and telling them, hey, there's these procedural issues that we followed, and then that third page is specific to their complaint. Chief Baugh takes the complaint that is done from his investigators, and then he summarizes, in essence, that summary, answering their individual questions. So there's really no opportunity for the citizen to say, well, you blew off my complaint, that clearly doesn't happen, and you educated me on the process, and you did a thorough complaint and explained why you came to the resolution that you did, which didn't happen before, which happens now. So I think when you couple the fact that we're getting the information from this group and it's being acted upon immediately, goes to show that this isn't talk, right? This is actually improving public police relations here in Canton. And the second piece of the puzzle, which I'm very excited about, is we're gonna be moving towards having citizen involvement in assisting with our training program. For example, Rachel is involved with domestic assault and abuse. Canton is now, once again, being a leader in law enforcement training, because scenario-based training is where it's at, decision-making training is where it's at. They're basing the training on the constitutional holistic policing model, which has five main components. Number one, police officers are problem solvers. Sometimes you'll hear people say, police officers are warriors, where there are times where they have to be a warrior to protect themselves or someone else, and then you hear that police officers are guardians, where they have to help somebody cross the street. Yes, they have to do all that, but in every single call they go to, they have to be a problem solver. problem solver. So the constitutional holistic police training philosophy that he has, which is being brought together from what we're learning from this group, says that instead of just giving the police officers the answer to the question presented, we need to teach them the analysis. And part of that analysis is, the problem that they have to solve, the way to solve that problem, isn't necessarily found on their gun belt. It's not going to be their gun. It's not going to be their taser. It's not going to be their OC spray. And their greatest tool is their mind. So that's what's being created through the process of this group as it relates to the training program. We're going to be doing scenario-based training where it's thinking training, not the rote memorization of how to pull the gun, which they have to know, right? But we're moving into a scenario-based training where we're taking into consideration what we've learned from this group and what we've learned from other citizens to help us put together a realistic training program that can help the officers when they have to make those decisions when they're on the street. Because sometimes they have to make a life and death decision in between heartbeats. We want them to be confident that it's the right decision, it's constitutionally based, and just because they can do something, does that mean that they should do something? So this group with helping us with the review of the complaints has a direct relationship to our immediate training. So I'm giving this group, we're giving this group an opportunity to tell us what we need to do as law enforcement to improve our training, which improves our relationship with the community. So I think this is great. We are really ahead of schedule, quite frankly. 21 CP thought it'd be a year before we could have a meeting like this. The thing that makes this group unique from my standpoint is the members of the group are not afraid to give their thoughts and feelings. And most importantly, they're accepted by the police administration. And so this group had, hey, listen, we need you to reevaluate the police, the letters to complainants. It was embraced by the chief, but not just words only. The next meeting, a month later, there were changes made. So I look forward to what happens over the course of the next six months because you guys have done tremendous work in the six months that we've already had. So I probably talked too long, but Eva, here you go.
Just right amount of time.
Scott Wolf, Dr. Scott Wolf. He's an associate professor at Michigan State University. Did you have anything that you wanted to share with the township board?
Yeah, thanks Eva. Thanks to the board members for allowing me to attend virtually tonight. I'll keep my comments, you know, brief and really piggyback off of what Brett was saying in his comments, you know, because we've kind of been working from a technical and training and assistance standpoint, as, you know, as a good one-two team from his legal background and my background in being a professor at Michigan State, most of my work centers on policing and community relations and, you know, disparate contact with the police in some of my recent work and police training. So that's what I focus on. And kind of the, two things I wanted to point out in particular is, for one, just enormous amount of gratitude and congratulations and props goes to the members of the community, of the committee itself, right? As citizens of your all's community, I think it's testament to their investment in the wellbeing and the future trajectory of the community and the agency. And I think it shouldn't go without notice that they've put in a lot of time and a lot of commitment. A committee like this can't happen without a lot of buy-in from really good members and it's been a joy to watch them work. And quite honestly, because of that commitment and their buy-in and their genuine desire to be part of a committee like this and help the agency and help Canton, Brett and I's job's been really easy for the most part. It's kind of been more fun to sit back and relax and watch them do the good work that they're doing. And I think that's really important because, you know, I've seen, a lot of us have seen, you know, civilian oversight committees or whatever you want to call them, you know, groups like this that start and fizzle out really quickly because there's tension and there's lack of buy-in. That's not what I see with this group. I see a really great trajectory moving forward in terms of bringing good oversight and feedback to the agency and Chief Baugh, but one that will be sustainable in the future. And then kind of, you know, related to that point, you know, I think a lot of credit goes to Chief Baugh and his agency. You know, the fact of the matter is, is like, a lot of police chiefs, a lot of agencies are hesitant to look at themselves in the mirror and have especially external accountability, but they've owned that and they, you know, they were forward-thinking and pursued this type of relationship and community outreach effort, and a lot of credit should go to the agency. You know, Canton, as a lot of folks know, doesn't have a tremendous amount of problems within its agency. And that's a good thing, obvious for obvious reasons, but it also means that it's in a prime position to have a committee like this that can provide meaningful feedback, as Brett and I have seen, they have done so on numerous occasions already, and set that agency, Chief Baugh Agency, up for a future trajectory that really minimizes the risk of having strained community relations down the road. Along those same lines, because of all that, because of the buy-in, because of the dedication from the agency, because of the progressive orientation of the agency and doing this on their own, it's going to serve as a good model, not only for agencies in your immediate region, but I think across the state and maybe outside of our state. So yeah, it's been a pleasure to work with everybody and I appreciate your time.
Well, thank you, everyone. Scott, you know, his first training is we focus of bringing this term that, I believe, guy Timmy Luft and I were sitting in the office, this constitutional policing has always been a concept, but this holistic process, wraparound services, bringing embedded social worker to light through this board, the juvenile diversion programming, the training evolution that you will see with this organization. The first thing that Scott did when he was training this subcommittee was talk about procedural justice. So that was the first training that he brought to us. And that gets back to the heart of policing. It gets back to Sir Robert Peel 200 years ago. So without these technical advisors and this committed, if you look at the resumes of our subcommittee, it's pretty impressive. So I have a lot of smart people around me helping. And through that, the originator started this. I don't know if Summer, this is what we envisioned, and I don't know if this is what we envisioned, and we have Lauren here today, you know, when this all started, she was the director of the MIDC, which she created much change there that we're dealing with today in making changes for indigent defense. So I don't know if you have any comments on how we got here, Summer?
Thank you. When you asked if this is what we envisioned, I think so. I'm incredibly proud of this committee and the work that they've done over the last six months. Honestly, I had no idea how it was going to go when we first started. We've wanted to build something that allowed community members to see that their police department was operating in a professional, transparent way that was open to feedback and, you know, wanted to, was interested in making changes where necessary and appropriate. And I think, Dr. Baugh, your leadership and your humility and openness to answering probing questions once, once a month on the third Thursday, you know, has been incredible. And I don't think you see that. I'm from a lot of leaderships, you see a lot of defensiveness, and I don't think that you've brought any of that to the process. You know, I think what we've got out of this committee in the last six months, I did not expect coming into the process, but I think it's wonderful and I think I can't wait to see where we go moving forward.
Thank you. Lauren, did you want to say anything? Could you, just to let you know, you are a panelist.
Thanks. You know, everybody, I think, has made most of the observations that I would make. There's just, maybe if I could put a finer point on, you know, two pieces. You know, I think the trajectory of this committee shows vision, you know, both of Chief Baugh and this board. You know, I remember sort of watching the beginning discussions as the township board was having those conversations. And I think to Summer's point, I'm not sure anybody knew exactly what that was going to evolve into. And so, you know, I just want to emphasize how important, I think, that the combination of the support of township government, the police chief, and really engaged citizens are in continuing to help this, you know, evolve. Sorry, noisy dog. And then, you know, just the other piece that jumps out at me that feels sort of particular to this subcommittee is that the, you know, I think often, police accountability committees are sort of formulated in reaction to data that becomes public and are often a way of sort of creating political cover. And I think what's really important about this committee is that, as I've sort of had the opportunity to observe, is that it's really been about getting at the culture that needs to sort of change to be able to actually meaningfully address what the data identifies. And I think that's been something really unique to this committee. And I just don't want to understate how important the openness of the Township Board of Trustees, the police chief, and the citizens engaged in the subcommittee is. Because I think when you lose any of those sort of three legs to the stool, that creates, you know, tensions that can sort of derail these things. So, you know, I've just been really grateful to be able to sort of watch this evolve. And even though I have not a Canton resident, I grew up in Canton, and it's just, it's been, it's been really heartening to see this move forward in the way that it has and with openness to see it evolve into what the community needs as well. So thanks for letting me, letting me speak for a second. And I will just say Eva Davis should run all meetings. She is the most skilled facilitator I have ever come across.
I know. No, and I just want to add on to what Summer and Lauren said. I mean, there was no playbook for this. You know, that was the important part. There was no models out there, there was no playbook. And this group of people has really, you know, done incredible work establishing this. But I also want to say that being the committee who they are, the leaders who they are, and the board who they are, I mean, this wouldn't have happened without, you know, everybody just greasing the skids and saying, yes, go, this is important. And I really appreciate everybody here and online who have been a part of that. I also, what was great is, I can attest to what Summer and Lauren are saying, because when you were all establishing, oh, what, you know, how do we do this? How do we do this? And, you know, you're trying to figure out what to do. And then you would go into a meeting and you'd have the meeting and then you'd have, we'd have like the debrief and, wow, I didn't expect that to be said. Well, that was great. And that was so, it gives you goosebumps just to think, you know, how everybody was so impressed with what everybody was coming up with. And it would take directions, I think, that nobody expected, you know? So you would, you would, you would set the agenda and then the meeting would happen and it would just go in a different way and in a very positive way. So, I mean, everybody's done such a great job and I've been really impressed. And so I hope great stories are written about this and I know you guys are setting out what's going to happen in the future because I really think that it's very important what you're doing and you have set the model out there and you're writing the playbook. Thank you.
Yeah, like you said, it's real fortunate to have, like, the support everywhere. It's like everywhere I go, there's support. It's, it was a little bit of a mountain to climb because over the years, that trust between the police and actual police officers in the United States, when it comes to oversight committees, there's not a history of that. So we'll start to see that even more as things come out and play. Because so far, our officers are ending up receiving more training. We're setting them up for success based on what's coming back through this voice here, so.
That's another good thing to add to. You're right. You know, both of you had said that, you know, the police were a little bit worried about it and they've been great. I mean, they have really been great through this also, so the committee, and that they've taken feedback back and forth and that's impressive. Thank you.
We like to think, you know, over the years, we have some exceptional police officers and to reintroduce something or introduce something like this, or like, where's this coming from? We have zero problems. We're trying to be, represent our community the best way with, to learn what they actually want, not what we tell them what they want. So it's been a great run. You know, through the conversations, you know, with the future where it's headed, I think we're going to find, I think Brett hit a lot of it there while I was trying to fix my computer, but find different ways for...
Am I on the right slide?
Next slide. We want to set the standard for training when it comes to equitable and inclusive training and create a more diverse training foundation. I think in August of 2020, it was actually Lauren asked a question about working within the Constitution instead of teaching officers. Not that we're doing that, but that's kind of like the message that's in the world is you're teaching the officers what the Constitution is and how you work maybe outside it, teaching police how to work within the Constitution. Use the tools that are given to them by the Supreme Court, the Sixth Circuit, the state of Michigan, to work within the Constitution and on the outside of it. So that training is going to be even more well-rounded. We have the support for this. I can't say all police chiefs have the support, whether it's from the board or just the funding. So it's been very fortunate to be the chief of this organization. And looking at establishing a mentorship program for all employees, we're setting some firsts in the organization, so we want to make sure we have a strong foundation for now and the succession planning, but to make sure our employees are set up for success. Forward-facing policies, they should be out on our, on the website. I think our website, you'll see, Township Life will improve in time and access to our policies. It's something new. It's changed over the last couple of months, but want to make sure our citizens have access to our policies. And you'll probably see a board request in the near future to enhance our police transparency dashboard. The dashboard's a little archaic because police are putting it together and we're not, as we saw tonight, not very good with the IT stuff, so. So that's some of the things that you'll see. I'd like to open it up for any questions or thoughts. I mean, our board, our subcommittee has seen a lot of videos, hours and hours of videos, you know, just probably a little bit more context, our FOIA clerk has to look at these videos. So if one person is arrested for, let's say, a felony drunk driving, say two officers are on scene, it takes hour and a half, that's three hours of body cam work, in-station video, police reports, all that has to be reviewed and redacted appropriately to be complying with, you know, the criminal justice information that's contained within, so. Any questions?
Questions? No? Tanya?
So I'm understanding this is the first that is probably something in the neighboring counties, communities, this type of transparency oversight committee, you know? So is there a plan? I'm asking the supervisor to work with neighboring communities and have you had, have neighboring communities shown interest?
I've had a number of conversations with other police chiefs, that's for sure, on this topic. There's other communities have initiated oversight through ordinance, like your big city police departments. They'll have actual commissions, like Detroit Police Department, the Ann Arbor Police Department's had one for some time. I believe Lansing has an actual one, it's ordinance, if I'm not mistaken. Brett might know that question or answer that question. But they're, they're driven by law, they're driven by ordinance, and that changes the narrative a little bit when they're driven from that format. In my opinion, when it's driven from the community, we have volunteers that are spending their time making their community better, I think it's a better, better outcome. And it's been better for the police because I think even 21 CP 21 Solutions Hudson Weber Foundation didn't think we could get this far this quick, so. They actually tried to slow us down, if I'm not mistaken.
And I think we're kind of lucky because we have a CCIC committee already and I think that helped to foster this. And, you know, they've been a great help too. They're there. And when you actually asked for volunteers to be on the committee, you had a long list of people, so.
And I also wanted to commend the committee for doing such great work. This is, this is great, so. Thank you.
Before you all think that we're perfect, we do have, like, other, we have a ways to go. We are, we are hoping to increase the volume of the cases that we are reviewing once they are completed. I know that it is intensive for the police department, not just for the FOIA officer, which is also very intense, but just the tools and the time that it takes to redact the police reports and then blur all of the video and then get it uploaded. You know, some of these files are really... then get it uploaded. You know, some of these files are really big, and it takes a long time. And then making sure that we, on the subcommittee, have the time to review everything ahead of our meeting, so that we can have a very concise, very focused meeting, has taken a lot of commitment on our parts. But we made a commitment for 2022 to try to keep up with the complaints as they are completed. So we are, we have that, we have that to look forward to. And I know that Brett and Scott had some additional items that you might want to talk to us about as each of the cases come up, because you tried to give us representative samples, like of the cases, the five that we saw in 2021. So there might be some additional examples that, that may come up.
Yes. One of the things that Scott and I have had, had some good laughs about, quite frankly, is the lack of problem calls that you have here in Canton. And when I say problem call, I'm talking about where there is some sort of report of lack of professionalism by the officer that happens, yes, yeah, that, that happens infrequently here. So we have actually had a hard time finding calls that would be of substance to be reviewed by the committee. So we've actually had to go back more, you know, more than one year to find some things that would be of value for the committee to give us some feedback on, right? So for example, domestic calls and, and what have you, those happen all the time. But engagements between, physical engagements between citizens and visitors of the community and the officers, there's not that much of it that occurs. And that's a good thing, right? But one of the things that we're also doing is wanting to give them a well-rounded understanding. For example, one of the things that I, I was surprised by, and so was Dr. Wolf, is we showed them a video of a confrontation of somebody who had walked into a cell phone store, and was just being loud and crazy and saying all sorts of inappropriate things. And then the police officer showed up with their professional poise, calmed the situ, you know, took care of the situation. But from, what was cool from the standpoint of, from Scott and I, is that people on the committee said, how did that officer handle that, being yelled at and screamed at? And from my standpoint, that happens every day. But it was nice to know that the citizens don't expect their law enforcement officers to have to go through that. And there were some comments, well, how did the officers deal with that? I thought that was really interesting. And I thought that that was fantastic, that the people, because we're, we're doing a 180 review, we're, we're the victim, the complaint, the citizen, and the officer. I think that's what makes it unique. There was some care for the officer's mental state after getting yelled at and screamed at. So what we're trying to do in the future is continue to give that well-rounded picture. But we also kind of want to pivot to assist us with the training. So we're going to show some more of the domestic cases, because domestic cases, mental health cases, where we're able to use wraparound techniques, right? Not using the tools on our belt, but using the tools on our mind, like you guys have the social worker. So we're looking forward to showing some videos and reports to the subcommittee in the future that will help us create the training program for those usual and customary calls that the officers go on. So that's the pivot that we're talking about doing.
Just, just allow me to make a comment. So I'm not sure if everyone knows, but Canton Police is certified in the training that they do, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief? Nation, nationally certified? And so, and so this is like, before, before I met Chief, I met Deputy Chief, and him and I were working with a different program that we were working with youth. And one thing that I was taught and informed about is that we're so lucky to live in the city of Canton. Unlike many other districts or police departments around the state of Michigan, Canton is, has a, the national certification or international?
International.
International certification in how they train officers. And a lot, a lot of citizens probably wouldn't even know this. It's not something that you have on the website. I tried to find it, I couldn't find it, but it's out there. And so, reason why there may not be a lot of incidents is because of the engagement of the officers between the citizens. They're trained differently. For me and my background's in continuous improvement, I've been doing this almost, almost 20 years in some form of capacity, from truck drivers to educators. I've, that's what I do. So, and one thing is how individuals are trained and to be able to respond to certain situations. Our police force does a phenomenal job, because before I was a, before I was a resident, I was working in Canton. And, you know, unfortunately, I, I drive a little fast, but nevertheless, I've been pulled over several times. My engagement with Canton Police would have been unlike any other in other parts of the country. And so I was wondering, why is Canton so different? But yeah, it goes to leadership, goes to the training, and it just goes to the commitment to excellence that we have here. So that's the only thing I have to say there.
Can I just say one quick thing related to Trustee Ganguly's comment? I think, you know, when we created this committee, we wanted to create something that we could do proactively and not in response to a specific incident. And I hope that other communities will look at this model and see that it's a value add to their community, and it's not a detraction, and that they will, you know, take up this model and implement it to their own communities.
I turned it off. Yeah, I would just like to say that I'm really proud to live in a community that has implemented such a program. I know it's something that we all had as a vision for a long time, and, and to do it in such a constructive way, not a reactionary way, as Summer said, or accusatory way, I think is a really positive thing. Also didn't want to, I wanted to capture that there's probably a few speeding cases that you might want to look at that I just heard about, so. Oh, okay. But two questions that come to mind. One is, and it's kind of been answered a little bit here, but was there a best-of-breed model or anything that has been documented nationally or anything like that that you looked at when you did this? Or is it truly, we're creating something that hasn't been done here? And if that's the case, are we going to be publishing it somehow in the industry-type communications that, for others to look at what we're doing here?
Well, when I wrote the bylaws, I really modeled it after all the other commissions that existed. It was, I was under a time for transparency sake, since we're here for about transparency, where I was under a time, time issue with the grantor. But it's really modeled after that. Only thing that's different is we took a, a committee, a standing committee as the talent pool, and that's where the subcommittee came from. Publishing, I'm not sure.
And somehow, I don't know how you communicate...
I don't know if Scott's going to publish out of this. Scott, are you going to publish?
Well, I appreciate the offer. Yeah, we can talk about that. I think it's, I mean, it's a, it's a really good idea to at least, maybe not something, you know, formal like we typically publish in academics, but something for trade magazines or something like that.
Yeah.
Community magazines, I think would be a, a good thing. It's not, not only good for, you know, Canton itself, but to help other agencies and provide another avenue by which they can get into contact with, you know, with Ava, with, with Chief Ball, anybody that's, you know, the rock stars on the group. Yeah, I think that's, that's a good idea.
And, thank you. And other question was, so you say that this provides input to training, and so what's the turnaround on that? So if you find something that you want to adjust in the training, and when would that be incorporated into the training and the officers start receiving it?
So as of March 1st, we're going to boost up our training division a little bit. So we, we transitioned to actual having committed individuals working in our training division. For years, on and off, there was a special services lieutenant with the officers that are part-time focused. Right now, we have lieutenant that runs internal affairs, the records, and training. We have a sergeant kind of mirrors that. Then we have an officer dedicated to training. And what's going to happen is the implementation of some of this that you see here. And actually, one of the complaints we didn't speak to was to change our, the comfort, to say, for lack of better terms, for our prisoners. They were, they come here and they lay on cement. So immediately, I should have caught it early on, and I didn't, but when I was looking at a complaint, I actually took the complaint. And I was talking to the, the complainant, and I said, we should have prisoner mats. So, someone in this room, Brett Numchf, actually paid for it. He donated the money to the Canton Township to pay for the prisoner mats. And so we had a donation out of this already. So we should have the prisoner mats here, sure. So just anecdotally, the, the prisoner mats are on the way, hopefully not on a shipping crate.
Yeah.
And the training is starting right now, so.
So it's pretty quick turnaround to...
If I could chime in on that one. The Township of Canton has made a commitment to increased training as of March 1. And part of that increased training is going to allow us, because they have, now have individuals assigned full-time, we're going to put, be able to put together a training curriculum, as if this is a 500-person agency. So there's going to be training that occurs for every officer on a two-week basis. There's going to be, every, every two weeks, they're going to have a scenario that they're going to have to analyze and make a decision. So, a lot of officers, right? And so it's, it's going to take some time to get the kinks out. But our goal is a scenario every two weeks for every officer, so they can get the reps and they can think about it in a constitutional manner. How do we solve this problem? Not with our gum belt, but with our mind. Every two weeks, that's, that's, the man set the goal, so we're going, we're going to work towards that goal. And I, I think we're going to be able to accomplish it now that it has, he has the personnel there to make it done. So in answer to your question, two-week turnaround.
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
Anyone else? No?
I'll just say a couple things. Thank you so much. I appreciate you bringing this to us. And I know it's a continuing project, but I appreciate all you're doing. It's wonderful. And I'd love to hear in another half a year, a year, how, how the committee's going. So thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
Yeah, I just want to echo the sentiments that I've heard. And I won't kind of reiterate all of that about the prob, you know, I am, I am extremely proud and, and had no idea where this process was going to take the community. And I'm pleasantly surprised. I want to sit in on Eva's meetings, to be quite honest, because I love the idea of people showing up prepared to a meeting and then keeping it concise. So that would be phenomenal. But my favorite quote in, when it comes to elections, is from Abraham Lincoln. And it says, "Elections belong to the people." And the reason I love that is because it, it reminds me that as important as I think I am, or as far away from the basics of my job as I get, at the end of the day, the entire process belongs to the people. And I think you could say that about every function of government, including policing. And I imagine a lot of people wouldn't feel like that's a very valid statement, that policing belongs to the people. But I think this effort that we've kind of undertaken in this short period of time, and that we've started, it does make me feel like that. And I think it's evidenced by the organic process that you all talked about, those kind of hard conversations where things get said that you can't believe got said, but that somebody had the courage to say, and other people had the courage to listen. Like, that's huge. And that's, that's real, and that's kind of how this, it's just kind of how you implement change. And nationally, we're not doing too well on this conversation. And I really am proud that locally, we are having the humility and the courage to, to try to work on this issue. And to not do it as a response to an event, or to not do it as a save face, or to not do it to try to earn points, but to do it because it's, because policing belongs to the people, and that's your philosophy. Yeah, I'm, I'm very impressed and very proud. And I can't wait to see what you all come up with. And I really hope this is a model for other communities to, to really look at, because it doesn't have to be hostile. Officers don't have to be hostile to oversight. And individuals clamoring for reform and oversight don't necessarily have to be hostile to law enforcement, because we're not going to get out of this darkness unless we walk kind of together. And so this is a good model. I would love to, like, read about this in the Michigan Municipal League, or something like that, one of their publications. So, congra, you know, kudos to you, Chief, and then kudos to everybody else. Because this task is enormous, too. And I can imagine that, like, I know, like, I read the news or, or watch the news, and I'm like, just so overwhelmed, and I'm just like, what do you do? What do you do with this world? How do you put this back together? You know, how do you handle this, this stuff? You know, you do it one, one bit at a time. So, good job.
Thank you. Anybody else? Kate?
I, I too want to say thank you so much for your work on this. I especially am impressed because after only a truncated year, five meetings, that you had some very concrete and good recommendations that you put forth that I think will go a long way towards helping the communication that needs to be made. I am looking forward to hearing about more and, you know, seeing the, the future recommendations that you come up with. So, thank you.
Do any of the panelists want to say anything, or in closing? I notice, Amina, I know you're on, and you're with the CCIC committee. Would you like to say anything?
Denise?
Dr. Lilly, did you want to say something?
So again, just reiterating what everyone has said. This has been a great process so far. To see the work that we've done in a short period of time, I can say I'm very proud. And I just want to reiterate something to Chief Ball. I'm always impressed by you. He is a very humble man who is willing to listen and truly understand all perspectives. And so just to know that you are the leader in doing the work that you're doing is tremendous. And I know our community is in good hands, so I'm very appreciative of this.
Thank you. Humbling.
Thank you. You're not allowed to retire, you know that.
I tell him that one speech. I do have one quick thing, and I don't even know if I'm allowed to say this, but one of the things that the committee examined was the need for prisoner mats. And just want to publicly thank someone who donated prisoner mats, to make sure that, to make sure that prisoners were not having to sleep on concrete in the cold. So thank you, Brett.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. He's very insistent on doing it also that day. I remember.
Amina.
Oh, Amina? Did you want to say anything?
I just wanted to congratulate everyone. It's been incredible to listen to the presentation and hear the outcomes from the work. And just so proud of living in this community, in a place where we're willing to acknowledge that things aren't always perfect, but people are actually willing to do the work, and dealing with the messiness and the discomfort that that entails. Hats off, Chief. And the library is my favorite place, so you've already...
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then, thank you very much for the presentation, everyone. I appreciate it. Everyone here appreciates it. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Anyone, public comment? Everyone here knows they can speak at any time. No, I think the only one we have online is Cheryl. Cheryl, would you like public comment? Just raise your hand. Public comment, public comment. Okay, great. No public comment. Does the board want to comment anything else on any other topics before we close? No? All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So move?
Support.
Motion made by Trustee Snyderman, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.